Let's undo this weekend show, bring the kids up to the museum.
Oh yeah?
Toy show. Let's see. Let's see if I can see the rest of the museum.
What's um?
Ten to three or something.
Ten to three?
Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, we should. I hear a lot of really great things about the museum.
Sadly, a lot of locals don't come. Usually it's out of town people or.
Well, it's like when I lived in Colorado.
Yeah.
The locals don't go to the mountains. Cause they're always there, you can always go.
You can always see them.
And then, yeah, and then you don't ever go. And you know, it's kind of bad. You think you're gonna go, and then you never. We went over to the Harding Museum. Um, last Saturday, this last Saturday, and it's first time I've been over there. And on that.
Harding Memorial?
Yeah.
Yeah, from there.
But yeah, they have a.
Yeah, the house and the memorial.
Yeah, so we went through the house and the.
Yeah, that's pretty neat if you've never seen it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of really close within the county's area. Nice houses, visiting Garfield House and then Garfield.
I know Ohio is a, well, that's partly why we got our uh RV. It's cause there's so much history. I mean, if you, if you can just go a day away. You know, I mean, you could spend years just seeing all the things just in that area.
State travel, we used to put out date, what they call day trips, they'd put out where you could go in a day.
Right.
They'd come all over Ohio, neat things to see.
Very rich history.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am ready, Tori. I got money.
Pending issues for June fourth twenty twenty four, volume one eleven, page three forty one, minutes of May thirtieth.
Sub move. Second.
Roll call Roger.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Page three forty two, transfer funds for the engineer.
Move to transfer. Second.
Roll call Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Page three forty three, reallocation of funds for the engineer.
Sub move. Second.
Roll call Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Page three forty four, payment of bills to ditch maintenance.
Move to pay.
Second.
Roll call Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Page three forty five, reimbursement of funds, this is for the ANX for May.
Second.
Roll call Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Page three forty six, um TV control unit for the health department.
Sub move. Check.
Roll call Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Page three forty seven, Board of DD levy request to the auditor.
Sub move. Second.
Tim.
Yeah.
Roger.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Page three forty eight, children's trust fund appointment, it's a two-year agreement.
Sub move.
Check.
Roll call Roger.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Okay, uh my email Chris asked him, he has not got back with me yet. He did say that he would probably have to replace all the battery backups. I told him that I got approval. Please order them, give me a quote, give me whatever. He has not got back to us, but he's over there. The next item is your reminder, Roger.
Yeah, um the museum had asked if we have a short-term storage area uh for things that they currently have stored at a private business that needs to be moved. Uh said it would be about six months at most storage. So I thought maybe the Harfield building would work for that.
They got room left?
So, any objections to that?
No, not here.
Alright, we'll let them do that then.
Um, do we need to start the bid process or start anything going for the Board of DD chiller?
Yeah, we just need to notify uh Harlan Zeller. Go ahead and get started on that.
Okay. Um, Mike was looking for some storage space for his boxes, for his records. That's the next on the list. Um, I don't know Simon Kenton or North ANX.
We want to just put him in that one room, let's put him in that North ANX.
And you're still room, Roger.
Yeah. Do that, let Richard know that he's gonna go out there, let Mike know to coordinate with Richard.
And Richard will know, I mean, there's just some extra, is there an extra room that he'll know, like, so he's plugged in like that? Um, next on the list is, I was asked by DD Dos, the Logan County clerk, about what we did with the America two fifty. And back in October, we passed a resolution and I keep getting reminders that we need to designate an organization to run that. Um, so that's something that.
Well, I would say probably the museum or the Chamber.
I would say the Chamber, I think the museum.
I mentioned it too a while back and there was no response. They don't.
The museum?
Museum actually have the office staff to do something like that. There are grants if possible with that.
So, should I reach out to Holly?
I'm saying, yeah, reach out to Holly and she's, if her funds are, but I had sent her some stuff months ago on the American two fifty, so I think she's a little bit familiar, but hasn't been officially asked.
Okay. Um, and then I think we'll probably have to do a resolution of designating them. Also, um, the next question was where are the funds coming from?
For what, Eldridge?
No, for the America two fifty.
Uh, through either through grants through them or us, I mean, the county's probably have to provide.
Yeah, cause we allocated fifty. Uh, I think that's the standard that the county's.
Yeah, initially, I think everybody, all the counties.
Yeah.
Was in like fifty and went from there.
So that was just another one of her questions. She's asking for, you know, Logan County's wondering what to do as well.
Okay. See what Holly feels she would require if they're willing to take it over.
Um, the Eldridge installation, we called yesterday and said everything he's getting is over seventy-five. So he's a go out for bid for the installation and he's just wondering if that's ARPA.
Which can't run for ARPA, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, so that just determines the rates that he's.
What was the amount on, he, yeah, yeah. The amount over from our, over seventy-five? I think it was.
Uh, it reverts back to whatever the state requirements are to bid.
Yeah, prevailing like just seventy-five. Um, the next one is per deb, we charge for cleaning up the North ANX soil and water. Um, there was a Friday where nobody went because Scott was on vacation. So it's just something we need to talk to Scott about.
Yeah, he needs to have a plan for somebody to replace him, to same as any other. Somebody's on the case, you're going to board out somebody else who covers.
Do you wanna talk to him or do you have me to talk to him?
I can talk to him.
Okay. And then Fred, the last one was the A P R E.
Yeah.
Topic.
Yeah. And I sent out a email to you and to the other two commissioners about that. Tim answered your question as far as ARPA, what we have in there for Eldridge.
Hey, that's a lot of material.
Is it something that we can ask another county, what their who they have?
I think CCA O's put together a list. I can get a current list of what counties have it.
And I, you know, it's not a required position. So, we have, the history is we had one for several years and then, I don't know, he died, he quit, whatever, but he quit doing it. We had several years before we didn't have one. And then, uh, Sonny, I can't remember his last name, came in and wanted the position. So we went through the process and got him, um, appointed to that. It never worked really well. He wasn't consistent in billing, he wasn't consistent in hours. And then, um, we reached out to him, I think, two years in a row without coming back and being reappointed for the coming year, and he didn't respond to us. And unfortunately, he passed away since then. So, it's not a position that we have to have.
That's what I, I was kind of getting the impression from the emails that it was something that, that each county needed to have. And so I was, I was questioning.
It's not a requirement, but it's a position that if someone is interested, we can fill. Right? It's kind of been in the past, if there's nobody that's interested in filling the position, you know, to go outside the county and try to find somebody, that's gonna increase the cost. And we've only spent three thousand dollars a year on.
The benefit that it was.
Yeah, I don't, don't really ever know what the true benefit was. I don't know that he ever got to all the hives in the county. I think he did half of them one year and half the next, the impression that I got. He's retiring, maybe he'll be looking for a part-time retirement job.
Yeah, we have, that's true.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not opposed to hiring somebody, but be out actively aggressively trying to find someone. I don't seem to be.
I think we generally put an ad out a year or so ago and nobody responded. Probably tried half the time and ran into it.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Probably been a couple of years ago.
So, yeah, I think if someone walks in and says, hey, I'd like to be your atheist, then we can pursue. Make sure they're qualified, knowledgeable and all that sort of thing. I guess we're actively looking, we're just not aggressively looking.
I'm potentially seeing Mark on finding, which I already can ask, but he has a list in the area.
Well, this, this Ellen.
Yeah.
Is trying to get a list of or accumulate information about who might be available, so you might ask Mark if he's heard anything from her.
Yeah, let's see, I'll ask him on Friday.
Yep. In the small box was the uh the payment request, pay for the beautician's, looks like this is her insurance policy.
It's her whole entire, it's her yearly license to be a beautician, is what Kelly Kelly was.
So, now this, well, what's, the paper that's here is just her premium for her insurance. For three hundred and forty-five dollars, we've never paid that.
For, yeah, for what entity?
For the beautician that works out at Harton Hills, it's paid, I think, an hourly rate. And she's a contract employee, we don't pay the insurance costs.
As a contract employee, why we paying her own, we didn't make that consider.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, we, we send this back to Harton Hills and they, we don't cover this cost.
I'll give it back to the auditor's office. They, it, it came to them and then down to us, they wanted to ask it.
Okay.
So, I'll let them.
Especially paying out of the uh COVID trust, I really don't think it's eligible expense out of COVID trust. Tim, you an agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay. So let you put that back in the box there if you believe. Morning.
How's it going?
Are you here for a specific reason? Or are you here to watch or?
Uh, just here to watch and observe, so.
Okay, very good. We didn't want to overlook if you had something.
Oh, mad.
You were here for it.
Next agenda, forty-five minutes. Next agenda is forty-five minutes. That's why I bring stuff to you.
I'll go see if I can find Scott and let him know about scheduling somebody at court.
Brad, I'm on upstairs. I'm on to courtroom, check on the air conditioning.
You're going to the courtroom?
Yes. Till ten, we got till ten.
Eight ten? You sound. Right now.
Are you going to the courtroom, check the temperature?
Okay.
On air conditioning for five.
I see, I see. I thought you were saying that you need to be outside.
Oh, no, no, I'm just checking how we're.
Okay.
It's eighty degrees up there.
Is it?
No, but it was the other day.
Oh, okay.
I'm just.
Do you mind watching me go?
Sure.
I'm gonna run upstairs. Just find my. Should be fine. Should be fine. Just gonna have to be on yours.
Yeah, sure. I'll take your phone for it.
Can I get your name for the minutes?
Oh, uh, Scott Matthews.
Scott Matthews.
One team Matthews.
Okay. Thank you.
Never wrong at all.
Okay. Uh, Scott's gonna stop in, he's not available at the moment. Uh, but I went up, up to Treasure. I didn't remember receiving any investment reports. And she didn't know that she was supposed to provide us with investment reports. So I'm going to give her a sample of what Denise has given us and she'll say. Good.
Who's it called?
Treasure.
Call. I see. Call. Here.
Well, I've, I've got one, I just didn't have the. Yeah, there's. I don't. What's one of the best chronological order?
Okay. I've got everything that shines through my eyes right here. Boom.
Yeah.
If you stand here, I can see just the ones right on you.
Not on your back legs. Uh-huh.
What do you have in here?
Probably have like a large chair and just, like, just one of those really tall chairs.
Mm-hmm.
Morning.
Good morning.
How are things going today?
Good, I got a busy schedule lined up. I got to go to the, uh, Camp Common Ground in Dunherb because someone's bringing in exotic zoo animals, uh, for the kids and all that. So I gotta go out there and get pictures and tell a story. Other than that, nothing too bad.
Well, yeah, probably should. On your article on the MRD or the DD levy?
Yeah.
You, you had some bad numbers.
Yeah. Uh, Tim corrected it.
Did you just say?
Tim, Tim talked to me and corrected the article. The correction should be posted in the today's paper.
Today's choose the paper.
Yeah.
Can we throw around some mini numbers, it's hard to keep up.
Yeah. Cause they were actually asking for, uh, point five, right?
Yeah.
That's correct. So that was my mistake, I apologize.
That happens.
That's not trying to get a new do or get off this. So looking at a contract. There's a person that is counted who is part of.
Thank you very much.
Probably.
We just got one thing off my list.
Hmm.
You also that.
Well, I said one thing.
Oh, you one?
One thing.
I don't think that's gonna be an easy spot to fill.
That, well, if I know this. The person who has come.
Yeah. When you have to really twist and jolt somebody into a job there, it's, it's never.
To me, at least, when we came through with a contract for this particular year, to me, there's a lot.
Are you doing all of it?
Good.
Good, good.
And then it ended up, that was all.
She did an official.
I don't imagine Brad wants to turn, Brad wants to be out of that well before all of it gets out.
It's on page five, the correction.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, that reminds me, I need to call over there. Seems like every time my subscription renews, my online access drops off and I get a call remind them that I still bring.
We got a lot of those calls lately, it's, it's a bit frustrating sometimes.
I don't understand that whole system, then again. Yeah, it's, yeah, I thought, yeah. Do we know anything about this Andy Cruel and Justin Weagle, MacGillan, Bronder, people that are coming in at ten? I have a feeling they're wanting to sell us health insurance.
I have a feeling it's just to have their sickness.
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah.
How's the car running?
Pretty good.
Good.
Uh. I decided to take, uh, the top off yesterday.
Alan?
Uh.
How'd that work?
Drove it down three oh nine, it's actually not that bad as I thought it was gonna be, so that's always fun. That'd be cool. Cause I was just getting back from, uh, class, um, and it was like eighty degrees outside and I pretty much was like, yeah, I'm just gonna cut all the windows down. yeah, I'm just gonna cut all the windows down.
How was things upstairs?
I'm sorry?
How were things upstairs?
Good, warm. A little warm, they're drilling through the wall in the attic. No cord today, so that's good.
Temperature warm is what we think.
Getting up there. Close to eighty and humid. Like I said, no cord today, so that's good. They get these two lines drilled, I think. Cutting through, drilling noise cord. It's a tough going, getting them drilled through by a brick.
Hey, Tim. So I was just looking back through this note here in July and it was talking about the Ohio Labor Union with the pilot program with the solar panels. Is that, was that part of these, these new people? And were you guys able to get that resolved as far as?
Well, we didn't have any problems.
Oh, okay. They were just bringing?
Come in and we get them unionized. Everyone in Ohio labor.
Right.
Things like that.
But you guys, you didn't do it, I don't even know if it's this new program or if it was an old one.
Uh, that would've been an old one back then. Just wasn't asking, even asked anything about it, so.
Right.
It was probably last summer, I think, the unions.
Right.
Were here. We haven't seen them for about a year.
Right. So it must not have been too big a deal, huh?
Well, they're wanting, I think. They're wanting the labors to be Ohioan or be in there. And that's not between us and them, that's between them and the workers in these companies. I don't know how they resolve it or what.
Did the, were the pipeline people unionized?
I don't know. Not that I go up.
Right. It'd be hard though, cause it's such a in and out kind of.
Everybody has, yeah, their own unions and their own. There's always the pipe fitters and the firefighters have unions, professionals. Lot of unions out there and they always let new members.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi there.
Hello, good morning.
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 How are you gentlemen doing?
Good, good.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Some of you fishing or anything come?
Yep.
I'm Justin, nice to meet you.
Me and the roach, okay.
Chairman will be here. He's on.
Like Tim.
Pleasure.
Do you need a copy of the presentation?
Um, sure, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. What's up for auction today?
I mean, they gave us this.
Yeah, sure.
I like Keller from the consistent times.
Andy Cole.
Nice to meet you, nice to meet you too. I guess it's you too, man.
Sorry.
You get in around all the construction and then they're making that.
Yeah, that's very.
And do you have a copy of that presentation?
We've got a several year project.
I can share when you want.
Oh, alright, that's good.
Just letting them know I'll share mine here.
Alrighty. If we, if we have an extra one I'm done, I'm happy to.
Okay.
It wasn't too bad a construction now.
Yeah.
Plucked off one block, but.
Change is about weekly. Name depending which end they made. When they're done with that and they're gonna do Detroit. For next three years.
Gotcha. That's a good, a good thing, right?
Yeah, good progress.
Have you all ever worked with or talked to Jason Duff over at Small Nation? Has he ever been in your ear? I imagine he probably has. We used to work for a bit of benefits for his ready max company, Ohio Ready Max. Yeah, that's how I know. So you just want us to kick it off?
Yep.
Yeah.
Go ahead, get started.
You're all here. Yeah, we don't wanna take any more of your time than you do, so. Well, thank you for having us in. We just kind of brought a brief presentation, it won't take us long to get through it. But we just wanted to talk on, you know, a few things about McGonroy Bender, that's, that's the company we work for. And the value we bring our accounting clients and public vanity clients, and then the value that we bring your employees and their families, so. Does that sound okay for your agenda?
Sure.
Great, so looking to slide four, the one with the Metabon there. Maybe a little about me and then I'll hand it over to Andy to introduce himself. I'm Justin Needle, I've been with McGonroy Bender for about five years. Prior to that, I worked at the city of Kettering, I was a assistant finance director there. And I was looking at maybe making a career out of becoming a school treasurer and I'd gotten licensed to do that and was looking at those opportunities and then along came McGonroy Bender, one of my good friends from prior work experience and kind of recruited me into McGonroy Bender. Said, I think you'll like this, this insurance consulting. And, uh, and turned out to be true, really, really enjoyed it. I stay active with the Ohio GFOA, the Ohio Association of Public Treasurers. Most of my time is spent with local governments and schools. It's kind of my bread and butter and where I focus my time because that background in public finance is really helpful in working with governments, so. That's a high level about me and Andy.
Yep. Nice to meet you all, Andy Cole, also with McGonroy Bender. Been in the benefits industry for about four years now and going on too with McGonroy. So, uh, been lucky enough to work with Justin on several occasions when it comes to public clientele and just getting a lay of the land for what the public sector has to offer when it comes to benefits and where we can provide some value. You know, just to qualify and I'm sure Justin will get into it. We have a couple of clients in Sevco. Understand that's where you guys all are currently, if I understand correctly, so. We are supporters of that as well as, you know, variety of other strategies along with it, so. Excited to tell you a little bit about who we are, what we do and where we can provide some value. Thanks for the time.
So staying on that slide, just some high level info about McGonroy Bender. We're employee owned, we became an employee owned company three years ago. And we only do benefits, so we're, we're a broker. You guys currently work with a broker or you know, just direct with Sevco?
Yeah.
So, not too different than, you know, you might have a broker for your car insurance or your home insurance. They go out and hopefully shop multiple carriers and try and find you the best price. That's a lot of what we do for our clients. Now, with you being in Sevco, maybe that's a little different. If you're really happy in Sevco, you might not be interested in going out and getting quotes from United Healthcare or Metro Mutual every year like we do for some of our other clients. So it might be more about what can we do to enhance what we're getting from Sevco? Because they've got a really good package built up with the health records and all the wellness and diabetes prevention program. All those things are getting the most out of them, so. We, we look at ourselves as more than just a broker, we're really consultants. Where we're, we're trying to help educate, communicate with your, your membership, your employees and their families. Because we know if you can educate them and get them engaged, it will leave you lower claims or less chronic conditions, which is gonna eventually get you better renewals. So that'll save you money along. So, uh, we have fifteen hundred clients, probably ninety-five percent of them are in Ohio, even though we have offices in Indianapolis and Northern Kentucky now. Um, just opened our Cleveland office at the beginning of this year, so we're, we're breaking into that market. But we were founded in Dayton fifty-two years ago as our headquarters. We've got quite a bit of business up in the Bell fountain area and our Columbus office is quickly becoming probably our second largest office in my day. So, uh, very familiar with Ohio and that's where our focus is gonna continue to be. So on the next page, just wanted to show some of the clientele that we do have. Sure you recognize some of the logos on the right. That top row, there's the five counties that we are consulting for. So Carroll County, Danmark County, Montgomery County, Butler County and Green County. And Van Wert and Butler are in Sevco, which you may or may not know. And some of the other public entities, but then down towards the bottom, I also included the, the board of development disabilities that we work with. We work with, I think, nine of those. But, uh, the public sector is a little different than the private. Like I said, you guys are in Sevco, consortiums kind of change the way that we manage our client relationship. You know, it's, it's about getting, getting your money's worth out of, of your current situation and instead of maybe shopping everything every year like a lot of the private clients. But we're accustomed to collective bargaining. If you have collective bargaining units or unions that you have to negotiate with, you know, we're, we're effective at being almost like an independent third party that those units can trust. You know, sometimes it can get contentious between the administration and the bargaining unit. Well, we can kind of stand in the middle and provide facts and help define the ground. So we, we spend a lot of time doing that for our public entities. Also, if you ever would not be happy to settle, we can shop you with anybody that you're interested in. We're independent, we don't have to work with a certain carrier, we don't have to work with them, we don't have to work with United Healthcare. We do work with all of them and we work with them very well, but we can be an independent set of eyes under our client. So, moving on to what we'll call the peacock slide. Those are all, those are all the, uh, the vendors that are coming at us and coming at you probably regularly. You know, for example, there's eighty-eight, or no, eighty-eight counties, there's eighty-two pharmacy vendor managers licensed in Ohio. And all of them would love to have your business, but not all of them are worthy of having your business. So what our, what our role is, we take all these people coming at you, coming at us, and if you flip to the next page, we narrow it down. You know, instead of ten or twenty per category, now we're, we're looking at three to five. And we know those three to five can perform. We know if something gets sideways, we can, we can apply pressure or use leverage of our market power to make them make it right for our clients. And so we never wanna bring solutions or vendors that we don't believe in, that we don't think are gonna be around for a long time. So we have an internal committee that all they do is they vet these new vendors and they make sure that they're, they're legitimate and that they would work well for our clients. So, that's kind of a big thing that we do, we take a lot of that pressure off of you, but really what we wanna do is we wanna educate you on the good ones. Have you guys heard of Garner Health? Okay, so that would be a really good example of something new and innovative and you'll probably be surprised to know that Sevco actually offers Garner Health to eight of the counties that are members. It started in twenty twenty-three, they operated to three counties, it was like a pilot program, right? And then for twenty twenty-four, they added on to five more counties. So what Garner Health is, is a technology app and I have a slide, a little bit, a couple of slides from now that I'll show you, but it's, it's a way for your employees or anybody enrolled on your plan to figure out who the best doctor is, so that they're not just going to maybe the best hospital and maybe getting a not so good doctor at a good hospital. Now they can go to any, any provider. Now they can go to any, any provider and make sure that they're getting care from the best doctor. And we know through statistics and data analysis that if you go see the best doctor, the top twenty-five percent pile doctor, that your cost of care is gonna be twenty-seven percent less over time. So the whole thing with Sevco offering that, I'm, I'm optimistic about that, because we have clients, we, we were the first broker to offer Garner Health in Ohio. Uh, when they became a company, we've had Garner Health on our own health plan going for three years. So we're big believers in it, but it's proven to save between ten and fifteen percent on medical claims. Just by your employees being able to know which doctor's best, and getting the best care, not getting infections or having to be readmitted to fix whatever they can go right the first time. So that's, that's an example of, hey, we had ten people telling us they could do that, we thought they were one of the best, and we've taken them to our clients, and we've had great success with them. So slide nine, um, governments are often interested in how do we manage costs? I think that's probably, in my role as a finance, assistant finance director, and then now speaking with governments every day, it's usually, why do they wanna talk to us? They wanna save money. And so we take that as probably one of the top, top, uh, agenda items, how can we help you save money? When you're in consortium, your hands are tied in a lot of ways, right? You're gonna, you, uh, you can't negotiate with, you would see an M O, you're gonna be with Anthem and Sevco. But we can also verify that Sevco is giving you a fair renewal too. We can, we can run the same projections they run, and we can say, well, you guys did a little better than that, I'm not sure why this is happening, or you can take that up with them. We might not be able to negotiate with them, because, I mean, you're signing up for what you're signing up for with them, but we can also hold them accountable and let them know that, like, hey, we got eyes on this, you know, we just wanna be treated fairly. So, some of the strategies that we're taking to our public entities, I highlighted a couple in red, opt-out credit. I'm not sure if you offer employees a choice, say, hey, if you didn't go, if you don't take our insurance, we're willing to give you two thousand dollars once a year if you don't take our insurance. And that can be an effective way to manage your, uh, manage your, your risk. Because they might have a spousal plan that they can get on, and they can use that two thousand dollars to pay the whole premium for the whole year on their spouse's plan. It could end up being a better deal for them, but then the county also gets that risk off of their plan. You no longer have a liability about to call it seventy-five thousand dollars of claims, or a hundred thousand, whatever that specific stop loss is in Sevco. So, opt-out credit can be very effective. Uh, market analysis that I highlighted in red, that's really what we're taking out the quote. You might need to quote your dental, or your vision, or your life, it doesn't have to just be medical. We, we do all those different lines of coverage, and we quote them very well, and we can get a really good deal for you because of our, our market strength. And then member cost sharing, that's kind of getting back to that Garner Health that I was talking about, how can we get your employees and their members to high-quality, low-cost providers? So these, all these bullet points, we could probably say would save you one to three percent. We can't do them all at once, we would say, hey, let's focus on one or two or three of them. Let's make sure we're doing those right, and then we can consider some other ones. Any questions on anything so far? Okay, page ten, this was just a, a case study. I talked about that opt-out, that waiver opt-out stipend, right? So, an employee, if you don't want our health insurance, you can have two thousand dollars to use for your spouses, or just put it in the bank, if you have another option. So this is a case study for a public entity. They have really high enrollment, so they had five or six hundred employees, of those five or six hundred, I'm gonna say like eighty-five to ninety percent are enrolled on their health plan. Which is kind of normal for a, a government, and, um, but they, they were tapped out on their budget, and they needed to find a way to save money. So we helped to form an insurance committee with them, and through a meeting regularly with the insurance committee, one of the things we talked about was that, that waiver stipend. And they said, okay, I think we can get on board with this, the employees thought it was fair, um, it's a choice, you can't make them take that money. They still can, they can get off your insurance this year, and they get right back on next year, that's their, their choice, but all you're doing is giving them a choice. And so through this committee and talking to the, the representatives, they, they thought that was a fair thing to offer, so we installed this, this opt-out incentive. And, um, they were able to save about a half million dollars in the first two years, just by giving this choice to their employees and reducing, you know, the premium that they're paying to their consortium, because they were in a consortium as well. So if you think about it, being able to say, hey, we'll give you two thousand or three thousand dollars if you don't take our insurance, that's your choice. But then you save maybe, if it's a family plan, twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand dollars per family plan that is removed from your, your census. So, could be a really good option. Then on the right, those are just partners that we would use. We have a retirement, it's a company that we own the majority of, they're for Medicare consulting. So, that's no cost to your employees or to you, if you guys ever had family members or friends, or even yourselves, that had to look at a Medicare plan. They're available to help consult with you on Medicare options. And the whole idea there also is, let's educate employees on this benefit that is available to them, it could be better than what they're getting from the county. Maybe they take a stipend, and now they can pay their Medicare premiums, and they end up in a better place there. But then you, you have somebody who's maybe age sixty-five to seventy or seventy-five, who's no longer accruing claims on your, on your, uh, separate. Okay, slide eleven, and then I'll hand it over to Andy. This is that Garner Health type illustration. There's, there's transparency tools out there now. Just in the last few years, it became law that every health plan has a post, posted post of procedures for the five hundred most common procedures on a public website to be available for anybody to see. So, technology companies are mining that information, and they're making it available. And so, this, the big, the big picture on the left, that's Billy Health. All that is, is an app or a website that you can use on your phone or computer, and you can type in what procedure you need to get done, and it will show you the price. And it'll show you the cash price, all the way up to, um, up to the Medicare price, and then all the way up to whatever private payers, which you guys would be a private payer, um, in Sevco. And there's huge variability in costs, so for example, you see the eleven thousand seven fifty-six, that's the average cost of this procedure, which I think was a knee arthroscopic surgery. That's the average cost, but you could get it done for as little as one thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. But how would you even know where to go without something like this to tell you that you could get it for one-sixth of the price of the average price, if you just knew where to go? And then on the bottom right is a screenshot of Garner Health. That's the same thing, you say, I need arthroscopic surgery on my knee. It will show you only the doctors that rate out the top twenty-fifth percentile, and it will show you the ones only within a certain radius of mileage, you know. So if you only wanna travel to Bellview to Mary with Hannah or whatever, you can limit it to that, you can see what doctors are in that area, and you can pick a top performing doctor. It will give you a button to click to help, help you make an appointment, you can use the concierge to help make the appointment. And then employees are incentivized to use, go on the, because you're gonna give them H R A incentive. Where we say, hey, if you use Garner, and you do the right thing for you and your family to find the best doctor, we're willing to pay a little bit of your pocket costs. Because you know you're gonna save money on the backend on claims, they know they're gonna save money on the frontend, because you're gonna help pay our pocket costs. So it's a win-win for everybody. Employees love it, and, uh, the health plan payers love it too. So that was a whole lot of coffee, really quick, any questions, anything I can?
What do you say best doctor?
So.
That's just what you're calling.
So they are specialists in that thing that you need done, right? So, a general practitioner, they might be a really good doctor, they might have great bedside manners, they might, they might do a great job at most things, but maybe if you need wrist surgery, wouldn't you rather go to somebody who only does wrist surgeries versus elbow or shoulder? I think that's really where it gets into the best doctor.
So, so would you say that's through quality of care versus price?
Exactly. And so it's really, it's crazy, and it's hard to believe, but in medical care, the highest cost doesn't equate at all with quality of care. They're just not correlated at all. So, it is oftentimes true that the lowest cost can be the best doctor. Garner Health takes all of that into consideration. What they actually are, they're a data science company, they just, they bought billions and billions of lines of claims, and they, they aggregated all the data, they analyzed it. They came up with five hundred different metrics to, to judge quality. And they've taken that, and they've created their own ranking system, so you see the ninety-nine, the ninety-four, the ninety-seven ranked doctors. That's, that's their ranking. They, they're not owned by United Healthcare, or Anthem, or Medical Mutual, they're completely independent. So you don't have to worry about, you know, if you go onto Anthem's Sydney app, and you type in what you need done, obviously, they're only gonna direct you to Anthem. It's gonna be a network, but they've got, they gotta, you know, they gotta feed themselves too, they're, they're not completely independent like Garner is. So, that's a great question, but yeah, it's higher quality, higher performing doctors will resolve the lower costs, is, is the data.
Any other questions?
Bye.
Whatever. Awesome. And again, you know, that's a lot of information, right? And a lot of information, a lot of data comes, a lot of work, and so that's really where our value comes to the table, is being on the front lines, driving engagement with your administration, with your team to design the benefit package at the county level, but then drive engagement for employees on a day-to-day basis, right? And as we move through this presentation, we could slip, flip to slide thirteen. We provided a couple of examples of how we drive engagement on the front lines, if you will, with employees on a day-to-day basis. One of our strongest values that would bring to the table is our, our N B advocates team, so. This is a group of ten, uh, real-life employees located here in Ohio, um, that work Monday through Friday, eight to five. And all they handle is navigating claims questions for our clients' members. All of the members have direct access to them through a phone line, um, should you call in for an experience. So say you get back surgery done, and the bill comes in much higher than you expected. How am I gonna convince, is this even correct? I see charges on here that I'm not sure about, what do I do? Right? In a traditional scenario, an employee would have to sit on the phone line with the insurance company or the provider for god knows how long. Hopefully, trying to speak to someone to explain their situation, most likely sitting on hold after that, for someone that can solve the situation. Eventually, you see a lot of times, members give up. But the fact of the matter is, is not all bills are calculated correctly, and not all claims are processed correctly. And so, how can we be a part of the solution to fix that? Not only for the plan, what the plan is paying, but for the member, right? For the end user, for the employee, so they're not paying my necessary medical costs. And so our advocate team, uh, when they are reached by a member, the same advocate follows a member from beginning to end with any given problem. So you're not recalling back in on that one eight-hundred number after you talk to somebody, re-explaining your situation. What they'll do is they'll intake your question, your, and then we'll start a timer on, on the backend. And what that allows us to do is keep track of, hey, this is where this claim issue sits. If it's not solved, and we can't provide an update to the employee that it is solved, what they will do is say, hey, you're for a round in the process. Not only does that benefit the employee financially, right, as they're working through the claim issue, but it gives them peace of mind. It allows them to operate on a day-to-day basis, focus on their job, focus on their family, what's important to them, rather than trying to find time to sit on the phone and use providers and use insurance companies. If you flip to the next page, you actually see a case study that we did with one of our public clients. What we did is develop the phone tree option that members would call into, uh, through the county line. So instead of directing them to the county admin team that handles the, the benefit plan, um, it led directly to our advocate team. And over fifty-six months of calls, uh, we tracked over fifteen hundred cases, uh, and saved employees, uh, just about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, and that's not any savings that we take, right, that is direct to, uh, employees, savings that they have on any given bill, claims issued, question, uh, procedure. It's really something that sets aside McGowan Bender from the rest of the market, in my opinion.
Yeah, and that, that also, so that's your member savings, your employees and their families, but that's also savings for the county or the Sevco plan too. So if there's a hundred thousand dollar claim that was wrongfully billed and should have been written off, um, yeah, the member would have been responsible for eight hundred dollars deductible or sixteen hundred dollars deductible. But everything above that would have been on your, your dime, and then that would have been in your renewal calculation on the backend too for your next renewal, so. It's beneficial first and foremost for the employees, but the county would benefit too.
Absolutely. Moving through, uh, another way that we drive engagement at the employee level is through our open enrollment approach, so. Do you currently host open enrollment meetings, uh, for the benefits auction every year? Is that a current process? And, uh, you know, something that we've, uh, noticed with all the clients that we work with is open enrollment is a, um, hour-long to two-hour-long to three-hour-long tradition that, uh, public and private companies experience all the same. Typically, it's, it's a year's worth of information for the employee, all to try and remember and walk out of that meeting and make a benefit selection that's going to affect the rest of their year. It's a lot of information to take in, and so what we've done is actually a study on our clients' members, uh, in trying to officially change the open enrollment process. So, uh, what we've boiled it down to is communicating to employees what's staying the same, what's changing, and what's it gonna cost me? Because those are the three items that we found they truly care about in, uh, from the study that we've done. So, uh, and that study's called Our Member Journey, we have all those statistics available if you guys are interested in taking a look at that. But, really, we've changed the way we approach open enrollment, um, by limiting that meeting to, you know, trying to get down to about thirty or forty-five minutes, and not, not rush through it, but be efficient. And then track out your long communication to the employees, so the ability to drip information through a couple of different communication platforms, um, that we've developed. You know, rather than shoving that year's worth of information in their face in a three-hour meeting, uh, again, we keep that meeting short, allows them to function in, in a normal workday. Make it a part of their workday, and then access that information on a yearly basis as they're using your plan. Again, two of those communication platforms, you'll see on slides sixteen and seventeen. First is a, a platform called Explore, uh, this is not an app, so it's not anything that employees have to download or put their personal information into. Uh, what we do is we create a customized website for the county, uh, and you, like, think of it in the traditional open enrollment experience, you get a booklet about this thick, that you typically read, maybe ten pages of. What we've done is, is pushed that booklet entirely online and made it easy to navigate for employees. So if you're looking for medical information, you can click on the medical box, and it pulls up all of the, uh, medical plan information that you would receive from Sevco. We help organize that. Any ancillary benefits, dental, vision, life, disability, things along those lines, uh, they also are harbored in there on the box. We can add video content in there, we can remove content on there, uh, you know, it's, it's truly customizable and specific to, uh, the county.
Yeah, one thing we just added to that is, I know, A I is a little creepy, right, artificial intelligence? But there's a little A I chatbot in there too, so if your member is just saying, like, hey, what's my deductible? They can get into the little chatbot, they can type, what's my deductible? It will tell them, it's eight hundred dollars for an individual plan, sixteen hundred dollars for a family plan. It can answer a lot of questions really quickly without the need for you guys to spend manpower on it, so. And at any time of the week, right? Could be the weekend, if they can receive their urgent care, what's my urgent care co-pay? It can tell them that instantly, and then they know right away.
Absolutely. Second to that, you know, we talked about your long communication, Accelerate goes a program that we've developed, again, these are all interim programs, um, and come with, uh, the partnership of McGowan Bender. So these are not financial add-ons for you all, uh, this comes with working with us, and these are processes we've developed in-house, so. Accelerate goes a communication platform, uh, what you're able to do is provide us with, uh, you know, employees, uh, either phone numbers or emails, whatever they prefer, whatever you prefer. And what we can do is drip communication out on a monthly basis to employees, as often as you like, twice a month, like, um, you know, we can set it at the beginning of the year. So say we initiate one of those strategies that Justin talked about earlier, a specific Garner program. What we can do is drip information to employees on a monthly basis about Garner, so they don't forget, so they don't have to remember just in that open enrollment meeting. We can also stop it at any time, so if you're getting feedback, hey, uh, employees are like, I'm, I'm done with the, the mass text, um, you know, I'd rather have a text once every four months, or once every six months. In real time, we can change that schedule, um, and customize it to the experience that employees want. A lot of times we'll include, uh, reminders about, around N B advocates as well, um, but also just basic, um, good health practices, right? Trying to build that employee engagement of, hey, you know, here's how I wanna use my plan, use my plan effectively, here's how I wanna live a healthy lifestyle, so. Providing them resources and tools and information on, on how to do that also is included, uh, in that information.
Yeah, that'd be a good way to like delve down on what SEPCO offers, you know, diabetes, diabetes program. Anthem Sydney, Anthem Black Elk Online, which is like the telegraph. All those things, you can start to communicate and drill them down and just remind folks that are out there, you know, it could be... We do ours at McGowan, we, we get a ping every first of the month at eleven a.m. I get Accelerate Go communication. Maybe it's a biometric month, which we just had in May. Okay, did you sign up for your biometrics on May twenty-third in our dating office? You know, it's just a good way to keep your, your thumb on the pulse for employees and let them know what you're offering, all the benefits. You're, you're paying so much for benefits, let's at least use them, use them effectively.
Absolutely. Slide eighteen, you'll see a list of engagement video topics. Again, this just extends. If you want to place content on the Explore page or drip that to employees through Accelerate Go, you know, we have a library that you can access. So we don't have to come up with content from a base level, it's already created, you all have access to it. If there's new plan designs we're introducing and we have videos around that, you know, such as high deductible health plans, great with health savings accounts. You know, we're able to access that, that video content. Finally, there's a, a purchase program. This is an app, this is not necessarily benefit-specific. We like to think of it as if you all had the, the coupon booklets that were always so thick for various restaurants and fairs and things around town. You've moved, go on ahead and move that online for employees. And, you know, you, it's not just active in this region. If you're traveling, if you're moving around, there's, you know, things like Wendy's coupons on there, cabinet coupons on there, H-pack. You know, a variety of options for employees to save money. So what we're trying to address with that is, you know, the benefits landscape is changing a little bit as to what employees expect their employers to provide them. We've tried to knock out a couple of those ancillary benefits that, you know, people might expect memberships or subscriptions that come with, hey, I work here. So we've tried to provide employers with a resource to offer that to employees, and then again, you know, frontline employee savings. I don't know that I've met anybody that hates coupon, so. Yeah, I think that's a, a shortlist of a variety of ways that we can provide value to the benefits experience. I think a common thing you'll notice throughout the presentation is our, our little case. But what we try to do is give you access to the information and data to make educated decisions that will in turn positively affect our benefit plan from a financial standpoint and from an employee engagement standpoint.
I guess probably the big question is what is, is the cost of the county participating?
So, I'm never afraid to talk about cost, but I always have to caveat it because we don't know exactly what you might be looking for from us. You know, we're, we're pretty custom. I mean, I, I wish once I spit all on everything. If they gave me the power to price everything, I'd have a lot of clients that are priced low. But they, they don't let me do that. So we would have to run it through a pricing tool and get approval from our leadership team.
Can we speak in a certain percentage?
No, no, we're going to take the percentage. So the way pricing generally works in, in the insurance world is per employee, per month, in Ohio at least. It used to be a percentage premium. I've always thought that was counterintuitive to our goal. If I'm getting three percent of your medical premium, I sure would like your premium to go higher, right? Because that means I get a raise. That's why we want to do it. So we try to capitate it at a per-employee, per-month rate. Being a government and being in a consortium, I'll say that rate is lower for, for your situation. That would be if we went and worked with a private entity down the road, it's going to be a higher level of intensity engagement. Because SEPCO's doing a little bit of the work that we might normally do. So, I don't, I have a, I know what we charge other counties in SEPCO, but like Butler County, that's twelve, thirteen-hundred employees. It's a different thing. Their annual fee is like ninety thousand, yours is going to be ninety thousand. It might be, you know, like that, I'm not sure. I, I, we could work on a price for you if, if you wanted, and I have no problem going back and saying, hey, they just want to know a price, they're not committed to anything. Because I think that's important, you can't make a decision without a price. But I, I would guess it would probably be in the fifty-ish range.
Around fifty.
Yeah.
And I, I know SEPCO has some of these engagement programs. Unfortunately, we have not had big success with our employees participating in those. We've got a wellness program that we try to, to promote, and it doesn't have great success. We have just a very small group of people that participate. It's hard to tell what, what the usage is with the online doctor feature, and that's what they, we don't have numbers on that. We have, we have benefits now that our employees are using them. So that makes it difficult to say, we need to provide more benefits. Additional cost to, to be able to use.
Yeah, right. And I think, to your point, I think that's something that we can come in and help drive engagement to those benefits you already have, right? I think our goal is not to come in and add a bunch of pieces to your plan if we have employees that are one, right? So, you know, we have internal teams that we can engage with you and start getting the most out of what you currently offer, right? And really see that increase and provide you with, again, with information and data that, hey, usage is increasing, here's how we know. And allow you to get the, squeeze the most juice out of your current plan before going and adding additional services or supports. So, I think that's important, by the way.
Yeah, and we can bring a little more transparency, I think, too. For example, if Butler County were wanting to be installing data analytics, they just joined in January, so we're still getting some of that stuff off the ground. It's not a light switch that just blow on, but data analytics, which is going to help identify their gaps in care, where, where their population is health-wise, what conditions are driving the cost for them. So that's going to impact their, their renewals from year to year, once we can get our, our, a thumb on that. And then also monthly reporting. I'm not sure if you ever received throughout the year how, how you're performing as a standalone county. But for Butler County, we're going to provide monthly reporting that will show, here's how you're doing, that will help to gauge, you know, what that renewal might be coming up next year and help with the budgeting process there as well. But really, it's kind of transparency, and, and while we, we value SEPCO as a provider and partner, but they need to help you be good stewards, right? And so we want to, we want to help them help you be good stewards just by, you know, applying a little bit of pressure to them if we can. Are there other areas where you think you're falling short? I mean, obviously, you're, you're offering a very good benefit program. We don't have all the details on what you do offer. I just, I'm making some stereotypical assumptions as a government, as a SEPCO member. You have a really good medical plan. I assume your other plans are pretty generous as well. Are there other things you're hearing that we should be looking at that you're not, or?
Notes paying more the premium, yeah, the typical thing.
Yeah.
Now, we offer employee-paid dental and vision. SEPCO subsidizes those at all.
Okay.
But we do get, I think, pretty good rates on those. We do have a, a local gentleman that's a broker that helps us all that for us.
Okay.
I'm not even sure what, what his company name is. I know he's, he's always in, which is owned by his first name.
There you go.
He's been here for years, so. We, we have, our division is through Anthem and dental is Delta.
Okay. And I believe SEPCO offers a Delta program as well. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how rates would come out there. Could be something we have, but is there anything else that we could help to educate you on in the future? We didn't come in here expecting to win your business today. We would love to, but, you know, we're, we're realistic in the fact that, hey, this is a line-out, this is incremental expense. We want, we basically just want to be able to make you feel more comfortable about who we are, what we do, and how we can help. And if there's something we can do to continue this conversation in the future, we're, we're happy to do that and come back and at a later time. Or if there's something you think we hit on today that you really like, that you would like to maybe accelerate partnership, we'd be happy to do some light work on that to, to make you feel more comfortable about it too.
Do you have any? I don't know right now that you're going to welcome to come back and check in with us later.
Okay.
You haven't, you've been kind of quiet.
Yeah, I, the only thing I, a little bit familiar with this is the opt-out credit. I was from a school board member at one time, our school did an opt-out, I think, saved about a million dollars the first year of doing that. So if it does work, it's kind of not conducive to the public opinion to like that. Then you pay someone not to take insurance and, and be a benefit, but it does, I think, when you talk to the auditors, it does make sense. Especially when you have a husband, wife, partner, whatever, they're working at the same place, same school, having the same insurance. You can save money that way by one of them opting out and you undertaking a family loss instead of two singles. You know, sometimes, sometimes teachers marry, so you have, so that happens. So I am familiar with that, that, that can work out, that your auditor has to be able to work for something like that. Have to be able to present a public perception on why that would be an advantage.
Yeah. And it could, it could generate some really good savings, and like I said, to me, it's a choice. I'm all about giving employees choices. Make them make their own decision. We can provide decision support tools, help them to a good decision. But the more choices, you don't have ridiculous amount of choices, but the more choices is better in general.
Have you seen a decline in the opt-out usage due to companies saying if you have insurance provided at your, your entity that you can't get along a family plan with the spouses?
I don't know. That, that strategy of spousal surcharges or spousal carve-outs, we just call it spousal language in general, that is increasing in commonality. I want to say fifty percent of governments in Ohio do have some sort of spousal language.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
We do hear.
Yeah. So, I mean, it definitely does impact the effectiveness, so that would be something that we, we would want to consider. But I don't think it's, I don't think anything's happening quickly as far as like, you know, ten percent less this year, ten percent less next year. It's just onesies, twosies, and, but it is, it's a valid point for sure. And I think that spousal language is very important. I don't like it from an employee standpoint, from ensuring my own family. I don't like that being dictated upon me, but governments are bearing way more risk than private entities because you just know if, if my wife works at the county and I work at McGowan Great Bender, the county's going to have a better plan, I'm getting on that plan. I'm not taking the goings. And that's just how it is, and you have to counteract that at some point. And, and governments in Ohio are, they're, they're catching on to that, they're, they're making changes. You know, I don't, I don't love it, I don't love having to tell people that, but from a business perspective, it's very important to make that consideration. So I'm glad you guys are already doing something there.
Well, thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. It means a lot. We sincerely appreciate the time.
Okay.
Pretty good. Go on to that option and see if you can buy any. Probably can for a dollar. All right. Anybody tell me about the backpacks at our first?
Thank you so much for talking. Appreciate it. Great to meet you. Thank you so much for the time. Absolutely. Appreciate you. Absolutely.
Thanks, everybody, for listening to us.
Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, I'm not sure that elected officials are eligible for that.
I doubt it.
Yep.
Will this work?
Should. Daddy, you're not hot tea, you don't need that commendancy. For the North Fanex. I know it's a new situation up there, but if you're not in, can you make sure that somebody is scheduled to go through and vote for a claim? Yeah.
Yeah.
Say H-five of today's paper.
H-five or thereabouts.
I thought that picture looked familiar.
So in regards to this, would this be something you want to pursue in the future, or would you prefer the status quo? Give it a chance.
I think we can talk about it. We'd look at, we usually look at anything, but we're pretty happy with SEPCO. A lot of the counties are part of SEPCO, so it's more than fifty percent, I think, of the counties, probably sixty percent are with SEPCO, so it's...
Okay.
We'll look at, we'll look at anything usually, play in against what we have. Pretty happy with what we have. That answers your question.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we're willing to listen about anybody to come in, you know, and, and, and given time, like a year, you know, we'll get several coming in. Some are good, some are tough, some are fly-by-night, some are just trying to get your dollar. This sounds like it's pretty adept and well-organized, but it sounds like we're mostly southeast Ohio or as far as Ohio is concerned. Maybe Columbus, Maryland. What problem we find is there's some larger cities, they're looking for larger city governments. Larger pool of people or larger counties. Little counties don't get the benefits. County.
I'm a little worried here, can you get them? Well, when I talked to her on the phone, she seemed fine. Right, a lot of the problems. You know, I make a note that unable to call or disconnect the phone number, whatever, right? Making decision calls, inevitably, I think I've had six people, you know, I didn't feel the way, the reason to know that. Why didn't you call me? Oh? Yeah, I'm not just gonna, right, one, couple cases. I already wondered, I mean, why it's just, you know, you know, people do that. I wondered.
All right, you know, a little less than you're doing.
Yep.
Sorry, but thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Do you have anything else? Except.
Everybody seems pretty chipped today.
Everybody seems pretty chipper today.
You ready? Any favor you can have? Oh, okay.
Well, I was gonna see when Roger came back. I think he's coming back. Do you know if Roger's coming back, are you gonna leave before he comes back?
Uh, I mean, she should be back.
Okay.
I wouldn't leave him quite yet.
Okay.
Until he says we're done.
Yes, right.
I don't think he has anything else, or I just.
Look, I didn't even take any notes today.
Hey, I like that. It was a clean layer today.
Yeah. Well, I figure. If you talk to him some more, it'd be important, though. The sales pitches.
Yeah, I doubt it. We won't ask him back, but a lot of times, they, next year, they'll come back.
I don't know.
It'd be a tough job.
I don't know if Tim's gonna have me write anything on that. It's even early, nothing really new and boring stuff. I've recorded the whole thing because I, it was just too much for me to keep up with tightly, and it's probably the safest to avoid.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can kind of note they were in and what they were offering, maybe, or. They tend to be pretty windy.
When you have a a nice booklet like that. I know you've done it a bit.
Actually, they have a nicer booklet than what we usually see, usually you just get a little card and a pamphlet. Quick speech and call us back, so.
I don't know, is out there.
In the air?
Yeah, yes.
Alec?
Yeah.
Not that you're not loving sitting here, but just to let you know, we have nothing else on this agenda the rest of the day.
Okay.
So we're done with our scheduled meetings.
Alrighty, I just, I was just waiting on Roger, uh, say, for good to go or something like that.
Yeah, that's, um, that's everything on the agenda.
Alrighty.
You're bored of walking to stay here and hang out with us all day?
Uh, no, I gotta go to a thing up in Dunkirk, zoo animals and all that.
Oh, is it the library?
Yeah, the library.
We don't, we don't take folk to comment.
I'm missing out on that.
I'm just having a gig, I'm trying to prove my.
It was something you said a while back, I just wanted to ask.
It's a little bit of trying to get everyone in like one front, I don't know, looking at you.
I don't feel like that goes into the public meeting though, because then my public questions don't make it into the meeting notes. And I think that's, I mean, if the questions are part of the meeting, I feel like they should be posted with the meetings, yeah.
Yeah, you're welcome, have a great day, I love you.
You can schedule a time.
Just schedule a time, but not today.
Not today.
Not today. So Thursday?
Yep.
Okay.
Early, as early as they have, you know, leaving on Thursday or.
Well, it doesn't usually take that long.
You know, just, just so you're aware that, you know, you specifically want meetings there.
To be there, yes, yeah, yeah. Okay, so you guys are are all good for the day.
Yep. I did some moment in time before. Ninety days.
Just to clarify, I'm emailing Jason at Harvard Miller, Kirk and Matt. Uh, those are my two, normal Matt Kramer.
Yeah.
About the bed.
Yep.
I just wanted to verify those were my two.
I know, it's Thursday, gonna be a busy day since this one was so short.
I hope.
Sometimes, summer comes, it gets shorter, usually.
Oh, well, that's good.
Just because there's, people on vacation, everybody's gone, not just us, but Salem and everything else, so. Plus, you've done the budgets during the year, everybody's spending their money until they get closer to the end of the year and they're either running out of money or got extra. They don't want to talk to us, especially.
They're still still trying to figure out how to use it all, so.
Well, they they usually find ways to use it all. We just try to make sure it's all the way it's supposed to be. It's called managed.
Of course.
All right.
How you doing? Enjoyed the weather, it's been amazing.
Good, you're good. Yeah. At least I think we're on.
We'll see you Thursday.
Kind of directing or.